Okay, you ready?
I am ready.
Okay. You can actually, if you want to come forward or slide sideways a little bit.
Yeah.
I may be looking at you. Okay, I'd like to bring the school board meeting Wednesday, June 1st, 2016 to order, and I will start with roll call with our senior rep.
Rachel Malanga, senior representative.
Brian Garland, school board.
Heather Furlong, school board.
Sean Carroll, school board.
Russ Holden, superintendent.
Paul Scarron, school board.
Kate O'Connor, board secretary.
And a table.
Sherry, your directors.
Jody Horgan, the principal, son of the principal of elementary school.
Megan, this is the principal, son of the primary school.
Shawn Lani, the principal, son of elementary school.
Matt Perez, director of the elementary school.
Okay. Matt, which you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag's right behind you.
(Inaudible) the flag of the United States of America and to be rewarded for righteous stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, would someone like to make a motion for the May 4th school board minutes, please?
I make a motion to approve the school board minutes as presented.
Okay, motion made by Brian.
By second.
And we have a second by Heather. And any discussion on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. And would someone like to make a motion for the non-public minutes for the same date, May 4th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the non-public meeting from May 4th.
Okay, motion made by Brian.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Paul, and discussion on the motion. Okay, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. And today, I just want to point out for the record that April is not here today. She is at a conference or a meeting out of state, out of country, actually, so unfortunate that she couldn't be here. So, okay, agenda review, the only thing we have, Russ?
We're going to remove action item B, except resignation of special education teacher Rebecca Ward.
Okay. So B is off the map? Okay. Anything else?
That is it.
Okay. Nothing else for agenda revision, so we'll move on to public forums. Anybody in the public have anything they'd like to bring forward, move forward, or? And if you do, would you please step up to the mic? Thank you. Is it something towards the agenda? Are you speaking towards something towards the agenda? Public forum is generally, or actually is directed towards the agenda. If something isn't on the agenda, then you really don't have, really can't have any back and forth, or at least any dialogue about it. What I can do, if you want to give just a brief something, I will allow that to happen, but I don't want to get into anything long. Are you looking for any answers from us, or are you looking to just report?
No, just to say.
Do you have anything written that you want to hand in or nothing?
No.
Okay. I guess just make it brief, because it isn't towards the agenda, and I don't want to not stray from the agenda.
Well, we have 15 minutes. If anybody else needs to use it, then I'll set aside.
No, you have three minutes.
You got three.
Okay. Name the job, Brandon, I'm coming to as a private citizen and not a member of the budget advisory committee. I want to congratulate you, Shawn, on getting all five members of the budget advisory committee fired.
Okay, that's it. You can have a seat. We're all set.
You like, it's a public.
Yeah, it's a public forum, and it's not directed towards this, and I guess if you want to, you can do what you want to do with a paper or elsewhere, but this is not a forum where we're going to be able to discuss something like that.
I wasn't in the discussion, I just wanted to congratulate you on eliminating the (inaudible).
That's good.
Great job.
That's good, thank you.
You had a question, not America, America.
Thank you, have a seat, we're all done.
This is a discussion.
Okay, we're at recess right now. We're at recess right now, and if you'd like, I will call the (inaudible). Okay, good, perfect. Thanks. It is, it's unfortunate, we've got individuals that are trying to do something that's not ethical. Okay. Let's move on, anybody else? Would you like to say something, Jody?
No.
Perfect. Okay. We'll move on to curriculum updates.
So we have a four-stage curriculum review process that is ongoing in stage one. It's basically a revamp of the curriculum after an analysis, a review, an assessment of those curriculums in each year. This year, part of that requirement of stage one is to come and to present that revised curriculum and give you an overview to the school board. And so this year, we have life skills with Amanda Heulock and K-12 science with Shawn Patterson. So Amanda, do you want to start us off?
Sure.
She has PowerPoint. All right.
Can you move it?
That's fine.
Just creating suspense. (Laughter).
(Inaudible). (Inaudible). He can still grab it.
Alright, so my name is Amanda Heulock, and I am one of the teachers in the life skills curriculum, and some of you may be wondering, what is the life skills program? So, the goal of my program is to prepare students to become fully participating members of their community. And what this involves is training on life skills, and then taking that training and applying it in real-world settings. And part of life skills is, our name is the SCORE program, so Center for Student-Centered Outreach Education Program. And the main purpose of this program is to provide students with significant disabilities, opportunity to learn, practice, and generalize across all academic settings in the least restrictive environment, so our home district, high school, middle school, and then taking these skills and hopefully preparing them for their future careers, their future living arrangements, and whatever else may come in their future. So one of the main components of the life skills program is life skills. And this is a functionally-based program, and it prepares students to transition from their school setting to employment or adult community living. And this can mean career readiness, what to wear to an interview, proper hygiene, how to make myself breakfast before I go to the interview, different things along that line that sometimes we take for granted every single day, that this is easy to remember, to get up, floss our teeth, brush our teeth, that kind of stuff, so we really work on making that habit for them. And the really cool part is we take some of those life skills they learn, which is in theory in the classroom, and then it goes into a generalized practice. So we're in the community every single day of the week, doing all sorts of different stuff, which you'll hear about from people else. Another part is math. So the whole math skills curriculum is related to daily living. So a couple of topics, as you can see, are number identification, and this is a really cool number identification, so it has, how I best learned it is if you ask somebody how old they are, and they say four years old, they're going to show you four. But if you just go, okay, so you're this many, is this many four, the same as this many four? So it's topics like that, just really getting them to think about numbers. Height and weight, even reading labels, so one thing that we've been really looking at is how much sugar is in some of our granola bars that we bring in, and you kind of see who has the lowest sugar amount at snack time. So really incorporating that into their daily lives. Literacy is another really important part, and this goes into functional vocabulary, so how to get up in front of a bunch of people and talk to them, what words do you, what's appropriate, thank you, please, email etiquette. I'm sure many of you have gotten an email that says, hey, no period, no comma, what are you doing? That's become, through texting, so going over with our students, things like that, computer skills, how to go to the library and take out a book. We've been really working at the library on alphabetizing and putting away books for the library. And then this is a really cool part of it, so this is the community-based programming, so this is going into the community five days a week. It's educational instruction provided by me, but there's also job coaches, so for instance, Unleash is one of the settings that we go to, and I'm there more as an assistant, and the owner of Unleash actually works with our students on how to create a display, how to put away cans, different things that they can apply and then take, hopefully, and get a job at one of the locations we visit. So here's just a few of the locations we visit. My favorite part is the pictures of them doing different things. So part of it is also recreational therapy, so how many of us don't take enough time to learn to enjoy ourselves or practice lifelong skills? So then we have skiing, we work at Full Circle Farm, so the students get to horseback ride, but then they're also responsible for taking care of their horses, so they have to clean them, they have to tack them, they have to clean the stalls. We go to Road to Independence, which is a really cool place that we learned to care for donkeys, and then we also do a gardening component as well. And their favorite part is bringing home the food that they've grown and worked so hard on, bringing it home to their parents, and getting the eggs from the chickens. We also do kayaking through NASA, a picture on the bottom is going to the bank. And then another really cool thing that we do every, great once in a while, is we go out to a restaurant, order, they have to order their own food, they sit at a table by themselves, really just practicing those everyday skills to make them successful. And that's overview of my room.
(Inaudible).
Okay, perfect. So mine's not on screen. Yeah. It's not.
It's not. It's not. Back up.
Which whereabouts do you do that, do you hold the program?
Whereabouts?
What's that again?
Whereabouts do you, which section of the school do you actually have that, do the program in? So our main classroom is down in the middle school wing, but we utilize all of our schools, students are integrated into gym and classes, so we go to the gym, today we're at the field day, art room, math rooms, we have favorite art.
So just people are clear, this is the second year of the program, and so Amanda really has put this curriculum together, working with our special education staff, and I just want to give her a lot of credit. The program is going phenomenally well, the kids in the program are achieving things beyond things that we thought they were going to achieve, so just a lot of credit to Amanda, not only for what she does in the classroom, with her staff, but for putting the curriculum together in two very short years, so thank you.
Thank you.
How many, sorry, how many students do you have that are currently in the program?
Three.
Okay. How many can you handle in the program?
Eight.[958.82][958.82](Laughter).
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on, I'm just curious, I'm always, thank you.
I know it's not budget time, but is there anything in particular that you, as you're growing your program, that you're thinking it would be, it would be good to have, or in terms of, say, taking the bus out, having a car, or, you know, one of those types of things? Have you, do you have any thoughts on that at this point in the year?
I'm really fortunate that Tara's in constant communication with me, so if anything comes up, I just let her know. She takes care of it, so as of right now, I have, I have an idea.
Good, that's good to hear.
So to help with that also, Heather, so two years ago, the district purchased the van, so that we could utilize the van instead of utilizing a bus, utilize the van. We also utilize that for something about preschool, something about boat runs, so it's got a multipurpose use, and it was just a lot, it was just a smart idea by our bus transportation coordinator, Brenda Thompson, to go with the van instead of going with the very expensive bus.
Absolutely, yes.
That's a lot of time and money. That's the black one.
That's the black one?
Okay.
That's the other one.
Are any students coming from other districts?
Not currently, they're all in districts.
Okay.
They don't get in contact with other districts, they are aware of the programs. Typically, when kids are hitting critical points, they don't, districts don't reach out to other districts necessarily, but our administrators are working together to become more collaborative around using.
Sharon, you want to speak too, just a little bit, sorry to put you on the spot, but we had the state come out and evaluate the program, you want to give it a quick?
We did. So in order to set up this program, we actually had to go through state approval to do that. And they, they went through and scrutinized, we had to develop curriculum, we had to have process and procedure through every step of the program. And so we were given temporary permission to proceed for this year, and I would expect it'll be out the end of this year, beginning next year. I see no problems. Amanda and I actually went through the program approval last week, and to ensure that everything we said we do, we actually are doing, and we are. And so I have absolutely no concerns, we're 100% prepared. We've been very fortunate, really, we've been transitioning one student back full-time from another place, and another student back full-time from another place. So, and there's, not without our challenges, we are proud.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon?
So I, I can answer a little bit about that in just a moment, but I just want to read kind of through some thoughts that I put down that will help you understand the practice that we're going to do with assignment curriculum. So this is kindergarten through all the way through the 12th grade. So this year, the science department consists of myself, Mr. Baker, Mrs. Emery, Mr. Eupino, and New Hampshire School, Mrs. Lewis and Mrs. Thompson. I've been working on stage one of our curriculum review process. Stage one is the time to take an in-depth overview of the current curriculum and revise or rewrite it. Prior to this school year, we took a really close look at the next generation science standards. As a department and a school district, we made a decision to adopt these standards for our school. So from there, the science standard content is focused on various units of college and careers. They are aligned by grade level and tied to the name of the English level marks and mathematics, common core standards. Scientists and researchers working on these standards found that in the real world, science and engineering is always a combination of content and practice. So scientific and engineering practices are important learning goals within these standards we have. So the committee started our work by reading this book, The National Science Teachers Association Leader's Guide to the NJSSS, which really helped us make a plan for implementing and building that standard more closely. It was a guide to help us implement them, the standards are based on desired outcomes, so our job was to create the curriculum that could produce those outcomes for our K-12 students. So throughout the school year, we met in smaller teams, because the standards are placed in that way, so we have K-2 teams, grade five, six to eight, and then the high school. And we looked at all the different standards for those different parts. We compared it to what we were already teaching and where it was being taught. We then had and shifted the content to make sure it matched the standards. We then gathered as a full team to look at some of the reports from Atlas, which is our software that we're currently using to house our curriculum. These reports allowed us to find any standards that were not currently being addressed. We have developed a sort of spoken sequence document that shows both the content and skills for students K-12. So content is what the student should know, and skills can be capable, the student should be able to do. So for example, I might say that the content for units of characters is of living things, so the student will know that living things need to be able to grow, reproduce, have movements, etc. Where the example of the skill would be that the student would be able to identify living versus non-living, using the verb identify in that skill. So I've given you a copy of unit titles, that's on the metal paper, for classes all the way through kindergarten to 12th grade, so that you can have a real feel for the curriculum that's being taught, is pointed and committed to. For our curriculum documents, we'll have all the content and skills taught K-12, and have a view of that progression. So you can see on the white paper that I gave you, it is from Mr. Eupino's, so we see that's in his content and skills that matches one of his units. So the final document will be, we are aligning all of the content and skills, we'll look at every single unit that we see on there. We also spend time talking about different types of assessments that we're happening at the different grade levels. As we continue to work next year, we begin to implement our plan and working towards making sure that our assessments and classroom experiences include all of these standards, and component skills such as things like defining criteria, analyzing data, evaluating designs, developing models, asking questions, planning to try out investigations, using graphical displays, digital tools, and so forth. So those are all skills that are going to be reworked throughout all of the students that we have. But next year, we move on to stage two, which will really be implementing that in the curriculum, and we'll meet as we go through that to evaluate as we implement it. We'll also take a look at any materials that we need at that time, to see if we need new things to help address.
Anybody have any questions?
So just the yellow sheet.
Yes.
Effectively, it starts in kindergarten, goes all the way through grade 12.
Yeah.
So that the student sequentially gets the building blocks for sciences.
And the next generation standards really focus on that, so you'll see a lot of them in, like if I'm the one who sells in sixth grade, I can go back and see what was done in fifth grade, what was done in fourth grade, and so forth, and so I can build on that. And I will, I will, I will.
Is this a new process for us, or?
It's a new process for us, it's a new state set of standards for us in science, that we really purposely chose because we felt what's wrong about them and what's the biggest difference. So these are the ones that really focuses more on that practice, and that really being able to, the inquiry, but also the engineering pieces and all of the application of those skills, so we really are excited for some of those new standards to come out of this year.
It really looks like it's all encompassed, it looks like it covers.
All the parts.
It covers some courses that I probably don't want to take.
Yeah.[1473.21][1473.21](Laughter).
Perfect.
Is there a level of each, a level of each one, like throughout the year? I mean, this gives, it's kind of like a map, where it, is that a road, or like the old days, they used to do curriculum mapping? Is it kind of that way or not, or?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I mean, it, you have a list of these things here, is this all that's going to be done in the eighth grade?
Yes.
For that year?
Yes, so we're looking at kindergarten through eighth grade.
Okay.
Those aren't more, they are a variety of classes, so we begin, those are the general science.
Okay.
So we begin sixth grade, and seventh grade, and eighth grade, you have, you know, some of your set of life skills, physical skills, so there are different ones in there, versus going to high school, you'll have higher class, physics class, but all of that, you know, elementary school up to eighth grade is something else.
Okay. Nice.
So again, the national science standards were, two years ago, Sharon, it came out, right?
2013.
2013, thank you. A lot of states dumped on board pretty quickly, New Hampshire itself, as the state has said, has not jumped on board, but there are a lot of great pieces in those standards, and as Sharon said, it really asks our kids to dig a little deeper. And I like the fact that it really sets, puts it in place in kindergarten, looking at the primary rates as well, and not necessarily something you check out in fifth and sixth grade and get, smatter them up along the way. And just to review, this is a four-year cycle, Brian, that's been in place, was in place before I got here, so as Sharon said, stage one is program analysis, development, stage two is implementation, stage three is implementation, major, minor adjustments, monitor, excuse me, and adjust. Stage four is monitor and then evaluate, and you stop off and we're good. So this year, coming to you in September, foreign language will be coming to you in September, they needed to finish up, and then next year, you're going to see probably technology, family consumer science, or perhaps even math and technology coming back again, so you should see some new people in front of you every year.
So foreign language in September?
Yes, foreign language, they were about done this year, but they needed to finish up some work, both went away on some trips during April break, and so they said couldn't get it in September, so.
Are we going to be able to move the foreign languages lower in the grade levels to start them?
That will probably be a conversation for another time.
And Sharon?
I just didn't want to wait till September. It's on the radar. Okay.
Well, any of the high school classes curriculum, say for the chemistry class or the physics course, be modified in light of this, or not?
This is, you, the modifications have been made at this point, so some of the changes will take place next year, so it wasn't, it wasn't a lot, but there were some things that were really more focused on the practices.
So these are, these modules serve as good introductions, good basic introductions, good, yeah.
I'm going to ask Heather's question she had last time. Do you have everything you need to implement the program?
I believe we do. We're looking at, one of the things with the engineering piece of it is that there are materials that might come with that, so that's one of the things we'll look at next year also, is what types of materials we'll be good to have in the classroom as a set for students, so in that area, we'll.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything? Would you like to do a, a, or a B, or add to your discussion about what you did with, as far as the program that went on out here?
Do you want to explain your?
Or is that something?
I'd be happy to.
Would you? Is that anything that, Jody or Shawn, you were going to talk about?
Okay.
Okay. Would you, would you mind expanding upon that, because I don't know if the board members know, I think they had an idea that something was going to go on out there, but.
Okay, so Spring Left is a week-long activity-based program for the students in middle schools, so six, seven, eighth grade, and show the K-4s and one of the courses, 8th grade, 7th grade, there's a few different courses. So one of the, the course that I offered this year was really a STEAM project, which is looking at science and technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics all together, and what we did was we really revamped the whole area of outside of the middle school window there, and it was, the whole design was to create raised bed gardens with an irrigation system and rainwater system, so the kids, it really was open to them designing, which is sometimes tricky for teachers, because you have to prepare and edify and have materials and so forth, but I wanted that design to be theirs, and for them to figure out different things. So the measuring of what we needed for wood, materials and stuff, didn't happen prior to the week, they did that with me. So we took, took apart everything that was there, there were three trees out there, we went, we dug down four inches of dirt and mumbled that, it was very physical week. But on top of that, we did a lot of things with, in the classroom too, with the math and science piece of it, so just about figuring out materials and how it worked. So just about figuring out materials and how it worked, figure out what we needed. And then when we have this amount, what's going to give us the most area and so forth. So we did a lot of that. They did a lot of scale drawings. So we each submitted a design, and then we looked at all the designs and decided we found that we had the best one. And I stepped with that, and I laid it all out in the area. They did some artwork to go with it, and used to pay over your donation, helping out with some of the stone. And the wood that we got, the wood was, I did lots of pictures that I would share sometime. The wood was extremely heavy. So we, Mr. Goslin helped us cut all of that, so they measured and marked it all, carried it all to the shop, came back. The nice thing about this project was so many people, once they saw it happening, just got to get involved. And we'll tell you that the kids get to sign up. And so we do a little advertisement head and time saying, this is offered, this is offered, this is offered, what do you want to sign up for? And I had 35 students who wanted to do this activity. So it really tells you how interested in that type of stuff that they want, and they want to do that. Fifteen, thirty-five students to do that project. So we narrowed it down and gave some of the kids the first choice, and then they had other options too. So there were 15 students that participated. And even that was a lot to manage sometimes, with all of the things that were on that a lot, and we're really self-directed. So they say to me, I want to design this for our, we had an herbal wall also. And I could just say, figure it out, go ahead and do it. Figure out all the new materials, figure out the measurements, figure out how it went into it, if it's going to work, test it out. And they were able to just explore that and it happened. So we have a beautiful herb wall that has an irrigation system, a herb sprayer. They, they did a chalkboard painting, put the names of all the herbs on there. Because I will tell you that this is right, also right outside the cooking class, and the whole idea of vegetables and herbs are for the cooking class. So we'll come back in September, we'll harvest things, and they'll be able to go out there and visit. The really fun thing for me, watching this, is that after it was finished, people just gravitated to there. Classes went out there, kids were sitting out there, before school, after school, a very respectful space, but really just enjoying the environment that we created there. And that was pretty exciting. And kids along every week were asking, can we come? So they had a study hall, I mean, where are all the dirt and rocks in wheelbarrows all the way around the building? We want to help. So that was really cool to say, great, you have a study hall, do you teach, know who you are, come on and join us. So they really were excited about it. So they had taken incredible ownership of it. And I have these students, and I'll tell another quick story, I have a sixth grade student who's had a lot of trouble with the ETR of the school. And she participated in this week, and was a really good asset for the project, and really dove in. And she's actually very polite in the class. And so I asked her if she would be in charge of the garden now, be the manager, be the person who takes care of the, she has water, and assigning people to clean this amount. And she was thrilled, and she kind of makes sense. So we're hoping that sticks. It may not, but it was, it was a shot, and she's very, so a lot of kids are excited about it. And even last week, we had a few more things to do with it, and other kids got involved, and they were thrilled, they had to put their aim on, and so we have a rain barrel system that works, tested it over the weekend with the rain, and then they were able to water all the plants yesterday with the rainwater. So it was pretty exciting. So the tables had to come, it's a beautiful space, and I was excited to do it. The tapes were supporting that. And they're already asking me next year, would you do one of these?
Well, I wanted you to speak about it without stealing it under. The guy that donated the wood, unfortunately, I was, actually, it was Doug Fornier, I don't know if people recognize the name, but Doug Fornier donated the wood. And it was like a couple of days after he had donated the wood, he had passed away. But I'd known him for a long time, very unfortunate, had a heart attack. But he donated the wood for the project, and it happened to be Kelly Russell's father, who was our BA. So, sad, but sixty-six or something like that. Yeah. But, okay, moving on, school updates. Rachel.
I'm probably going to take some of yours. So we just had our band and chorus concert, which went really well. And there was also an art show that we put on, and Mr. Romaine, he's new this year, and he did a really good job with it. Our sports teams are also doing really well. Our track team made it to states in both softball and baseball, or in the playoffs. And just like during basketball season, the varsity softball team and the rec teams are really involved with each other, and they were able to come to our playoff game, which was really nice today. And the seniors just had their class trip, which went really well, and it was a lot of fun. That's what I got.
Nice. Thank you. Okay, next, Jody.
Well, it's not time of year, we have some more activities that have been happening at the elementary school. We had our art show, got in the middle of May, which was all, Melissa had done recycled art, with all of the different grade levels, everything from, using everything from CDs, old CDs, bottle caps, to newspapers, create art. So that was a big success. That same night, we had an ice cream social and book fair. On May 19th, we had our prize speaking contest, and seventh, fourth, and fifth graders participated in that. Douglas Pierce placed second, and Sophie Mark, like a first in the competition. Our band and chorus concert was also a huge success. I had got a lot of feedback from the audience that were there as to the level of play that the students had, and the complexity of the pieces that were selected. And our chorus actually had done a very patriotic song that they ended up performing at our Memorial Day celebration, that followed Friday. And then this morning, we had our dear graduation for our fifth graders, and we wanted to thank Officer Coach Lord, he does a great, a great job with that program on our fifth graders, and she paid him for supporting and completing this program.
Great, nice, thank you. Okay, next to middle high school.
Rachel only took a couple of mine, so I'll replace it with the seniors playing the bagel beginning softball.
You would, but that.
But we'll make it up. We had the annual prize speaking contest as well. We tenured participants. Tobias Desatell won the middle school, and Rachel won the high school competition for that.
Very nice.
So congratulations. Also, in addition to the band and chorus concert, the middle school band and chorus went to the greatest music festival last Friday, and earned gold level recognition. The economics class partnered with Project Sonny, the students got advice from area business owners and residents on the business plan theory development group class. Kevin Nolan and Tess Pam, two eighth graders, were selected as a middle school scholar leaders, and were recognized at the New England League of Middle School Banquet in the Center of Manhattan, Manchester. Three teachers, Mrs. Parsons, Mrs. Reed, and Mrs. Flint, have been selected to be among the 24 teachers nationwide to work with Angela Duckworth, who's the author of GRIP at the University of Pennsylvania. They get to travel to Philadelphia in June to begin their research. So keep going, your school year ends, and they'll be important, so that's, that's great. The destination management teams, which we've talked about, went to Tennessee. Again, this is a school year's team, which was a structural challenge, you know, finished first in the state, and was able to go to Tennessee. The fine arts team, that was coached by Mrs. Shealy, and this came, came in second in the world. So really, really impressive. And, you know, we've got graduation this week, and there's lots of, lots of business, lots of good business.
A lot of good things going on. That's great, that's great that you three got on that. It's very good. Yeah, hats off to that. Anybody have any, anything else? Superintendent's update?
Sure, I'll make a brief. First, I want to take a second and recognize Rachel for her dedication and her volunteering this year to be the student rep for the school board. So Rachel, thank you very much. And as Sean and Jody said, and Rachel said, very busy, so I won't be redundant. But what we like to do tonight is go back and revisit the conversation we started last week regarding the sign on June 11th. Sorry.